Waiting to for general public comment, we'll move to the first item on the agenda. My computer is acting up. It is. Whoops. Thought I had the. Agenda was the minutes that we're going to be voting on. Sorry. Thought it was all organized. Carolyn with FCA.
What do you need?
I'm just looking for the agenda, which I had and lost. It's okay.
I can put that on screen share if you want. Here.
I've got it. I found it.
You got it? Okay.
Yes. So the first item scheduled for 5:30 is a, an application for a special permit for a backyard ADU auxiliary dwelling unit for a detached accessory dwelling, or maybe that's accessory dwelling unit at 236 Chesterfield Road Leeds, MAP ID 15B-37. And do we have the applicant to introduce yourself and just give us, we have the paperwork, your application, but so just a brief explanation of what you're asking for and what you're proposing to do, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. My name is Chris Lee and I am head of design and development at backyard ADUs. We're representing the homeowners, helping them plan a backyard home or a accessory detached accessory apartment for their mother to live in. We're proposing to build a 660 square foot, fully wheelchair accessible house just off of the right of the existing garage. And we're doing it within, we're doing it under the rules for URA, the URA zoning district as recommended by Carolyn Mishk, as the project will be in there in that district as it's a split lot. Would you like me to go through and walk through the PDF of the plans page by page or stick with a verbal high level?
Maybe, maybe very briefly walk through the plans part in part for the benefit of people who might be joining in. I think we have a couple of people who've joined the meeting. And, and I don't know if it's possible to, to coordinate with Carolyn to show on our screen what you're referring to.
Yeah, I just need to, Carolyn, could you enable screen sharing for the participants?
I just sent it to you for you to be able to screen share.
I've got it. Excellent. All right. I think everybody can see the, see my screen. So I'll just, I'll just walk through this briefly. I'll take probably five minutes and turn it over to questions. So we're at 236 Chesterfield Road. We're planning on building the detached accessory apartment right off the existing garage and right next to the existing driveway. And as we can see, this lot is a split zone. We're partly in rural residential and URA. And per the guidance of Carolyn, we were putting this forth with requesting a special permit because a special permit is required in the URA district for detached accessory apartments. So we are, give you a quick overview of the site plan. So there's an existing driveway now that comes up a slight hill opening up to a large parking spot, which parking area which satisfies North Hampton's parking requirement. And we are looking to build this new detached accessory apartment as close to the existing infrastructure as possible in order to just minimize adding new impervious surface and, and keep the expense to the homeowner to a minimum. Also on here, we're showing how we're going to be accessing utilities. We'll be accessing electric by creating a sub meter off of the garage. Sewer is going to be connecting to the existing sewer connection to public, the public sewer system, and we're going to be connecting to the existing well, the existing well connection. We're not going to have to re-jill a well or expand the amount of water needed pulled out of that today. This is going to be wheelchair accessible. And we're doing that with, we're going to be doing that with some ramps and trying to minimize the level of the house above grade. And then the other, the other piece of note here is there are some significant trees, not, not too near the building site, but within an area where we worried about them. And we did bring in Bartlett tree experts to review the trees and they provided a letter meaning which trees are in the area and also give us the recommendation of putting in the tree protection fencing. So we'll be putting in this, we'll be putting in high visibility fencing during construction to make sure that we're not treading on the root areas and these trees are well outside of any risk of being hit by machinery or excessive pedestrian traffic. Other component of this plan, we, the build site is on a, is on a slight slope. And in order to make this more wheelchair accessible, we are going to be doing a little bit of re-grading and we're going to be down a section of the hill and making it level with the existing driveway and parking. That way we don't have to have people coming in on a slope and have excessively long wheelchair ramps to get in here. And we did evaluate other options that, that would avoid doing this. But after digging into the details, we did feel that this was the best way to create this, to create this space. And we do not, and also in doing this, we're not impacting these significant trees which are out around the perimeter. In terms of what we're building, these are, these are elevations of what we're aiming for. We're taking a cottage style with a seven over 12 pitch roof, very typical New England styling, where we'll be doing vinyl clapboard. I think that the homeowners are going to go with a green. And we've got this nice double gable, which is going to look nice as they come in the driveway. But one, one point of note, this is not visible from any of the Butters as far as we know. The nearest the butter is separated by a big patch of trees and is, and is above probably 10 or 15 feet above grade from, from where we're going to be building. And then floor plan wise, we're going to be building about 660 square feet. And as you can see, we've got features in here that make it wheelchair accessible. We are thinking about that in the floor plan itself and doing a studio layout, which is satisfying the needs of the future occupant. And I think that covers my brief overview of the plan. And I would open it up to questions from the board.
Okay. Any, any questions from Bob or Sarah? Are we muted or are we not asked, do we not have questions?
I don't have any questions, David.
Okay. Sarah?
I have, I have no questions.
Wow. Okay. And Carolyn, any comments from either DPW or any other city agencies or any communication to your office from Butters, Carolyn?
None of the above. I mean, DPW just submitted, um, basically a statement that they don't have any concerns about the issue, about the project. Yeah.
Good. And do we know if there's anyone standing by watching this meeting who may want to address this is they could either raise their hand or hit star nine or is there no one out there, Carolyn?
I don't see any hands raised or, yes, electronically indicated.
Okay.
Is that the applicant's family there?
I think it is.
Yes. Greetings, folks.
I personally think this, we're like looking at the future here. I just think these ADUs are, are such a positive development personally, especially in a setting like this where it doesn't seem like it would interfere with anybody else's interests. And I know it's consistent with some of the city's planning principles. I guess the question for the board is, are we prepared to have a motion to close the public hearing, which would cut off the opportunity for further discussion? Before we do that, I did want to ask about the trees. So that fencing is temporary fencing during construction. I take it to protect the significant trees. What about, how can we be assured that after construction, the trees will be safe and protected and remain healthy?
So the, in, in talking to Bartlett tree experts, they generally say if we are, they've got different, different distances from the base of the tree that gauge risk. I think five feet, they say it's going to die almost certainly 10 feet. You need to do root pruning, 15 feet, you've got much less worry. And then beyond that, you're, you're not really impacting the tree. And we're, we're, we're well without, outside of that range. So the construction work itself shouldn't impact these trees. And then in terms of long-term protection, the person Libby who will be living in here has been pushing back on every tree that's had to be been cut down. So I think she's going to do her best to protect them and make sure that they're not impacting at any point.
And we do hug each tree before it's cut down.
Yes, we do. If I could just interject, you are all helping me live with my family again and be with my grandkids in this time that otherwise I really don't know when I'd ever be able to see my family again. So with that choking up, I thank you all so very much.
Well, I think that's one of the best things about ADUs to create this kind of an opportunity to, to bring family together and to take care of each other.
Agreed. I do have one thing I'm curious about. Mr. Lee talked about the, the line, the URA zone line across the site. Was it really that important to get it into the yellow zone? Does it, is there a big difference in there? Permitting, or I guess I'll ask Mr. Lee, had you looked at connecting it and having it not be detached for ease of utilities or whatever?
So we, we, we had hoped to do this as rural residential because we would have avoided the special permit process and we would have been able to break ground last month. But we were advised to stick with what, where it's actually in. And in terms of the detached versus attached question, in, at least in this scenario, attaching it wouldn't have made a big difference on utilities because we would have been attaching it to a garage that had a cement slab floor. And we would have ended up excavating anyway in order to get the utilities to the basement. And the other thing about detached, from what we've seen, if you don't touch the existing structure, it just gets a lot easier because you're not worrying about simple things like is the wall you're attaching to plum? And, and, and you have a little bit more leeway in meeting the architectural guidelines of the house, like meet matching roof lines, matching existing siding. We can make something that's cohesive with the property without needing to spend quite as much time digging into the existing structure and understanding what's there.
Very good. Thank you.
And would it be, I assume it would not be a problem getting a statement from an arborist that the tree protection measures have been installed at that point in time? Just so we have something coming back to the city for the city's file to verify that?
Yeah, I think, I think we can do that. I'm not sure the exact process on, on how we do that. But in addition to the, the arborist's letter, we can certainly send some photos showing the, the fencing that's in there.
Carolyn, are you able to comment on that? Would that be sufficient, a letter with photos from the arborist confirming that the tree protection measures were installed?
Yes. I mean, that's pretty, that's becoming pretty typical in a permit condition is to require that, you know, as part of the submission of the building permit, that, that is accompanied by a letter stating that the tree protection measures as recommended by the arborist have been installed. So that, that definitely works from the city's perspective.
Okay. So I'm going to suggest when we move on the, if no one else does, when we move on the application, that we include that as a condition. And it sounds like Mr. Lee, that shouldn't be a problem because you're going to be doing it anyway.
Yep. Not, not a problem to send some photos.
Good. Any other questions or comments from the board? Or should we have a motion to close the public hearing? And then will, people are invited to stay with us while we, it just means we cannot hear any more comment or input from the public or the applicant. But we'll immediately go to a motion just on the application itself. And as a reminder to the board, as was just referenced, I think, this is, or maybe it isn't. Am I in the right application? This is the one that's also going, yeah, to the planning board because the special permit is required?
No, that was the other one. Yeah. This one is done after your review. Yeah.
Got it. Okay. I just wanted to be clear about that. So there's no further review by any other boards once we approve it. So the board should be aware of that. Yeah. So a motion, a motion to close the public hearing?
So move. A second.
And all in favor, I think we have to take a roll call because it's a virtual meeting. So Carolyn, if you could read the roll.
Sarah Northrup? How do you vote? Okay, Bob Riddle? And David Boomer?
Yes. So that, so the public hearing is closed. That's unanimous. And now do we have a motion on the application for a special permit?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve the special permit for backyard ADU for detached accessory dwelling at 236 Chesterfield Road Leeds. MAP ID 15B-37 with the condition that care be taken to provide tree armor and that for any trees that are endangered.
And maybe the specific suggestion is to clarify that last point to require a written statement submitted to Carolyn, to the Office of Planning and Sustainability by a certified arborist that the tree protection measures have been installed on the site in accordance with the recommendations of the arborist. Is that?
Agreed.
Agreed. What we're saying. Okay. So that, that would be the full, the full condition. And a second, second? I'm sorry, second. That was, I think, Sarah seconding. And then we'll do the roll call, please.
Bob Riddle?
Yes.
Sarah Northrup?
Yes.
And Dana Boomer?
Yes, that's unanimous. Congratulations. I think this is a wonderful proposal. Yes. All the best. Okay. So let's see, we're, it's past 5:45. So I think we can move to the next item on the agenda.
So before we leave, I just wanted to thank from the whole family. This was a perfect present for the first night of Hanukkah.
Oh, good. Oh, happy Hanukkah.
So thank you all. And thank you for so much. Thank you.
So much. Be safe. My family is awesome. And I can't believe I am living in an area where this whole conversation was about the safety of the trees.
Well, there is nothing else to worry about in this application.
No, what can be more important?
It's a miracle of Hanukkah. May it last more than eight days.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Take care. Take care. Yes, thank you. So let's see, the item at 5:45 is an application for a special permit by Miles Powers for a home business with storage and one employee at 218 Drury Lane in Florence, MAP ID 48-17. Is Mr. Powers or his representative here to present a brief description of the application?
I think so.
Carolyn, I have my hand up.
We need to have the presentation by the applicant. So I'm just going to put the screen share up for the project. And I don't know if the, I see that Miles Powers is on the Zoom. So I don't know if you'd want to just briefly describe your project?
Yes, I'm here. Miles Powers and I live at 218 Drury Lane and I'm looking to have, to run a landscaping business out of my home. Yeah, I guess that's, that's what my intentions are. And I have one employee and we would be leaving at seven o'clock in the morning and then we'd be gone for the day and then coming back to my house at around 4:30 in the afternoon.
Okay. And, and this primarily, as I understand your application is to have a place to store equipment that I assume you'll be taking out in the morning and off-site and returning in the end of the day and putting it in, is it a shed or a structure?
Yes, it's a shed. Yeah, it's a shed. And I'd be just, I use lawn mowers and weed whackers and leaf blowers. And basically I leave and then I come back at the end of the day. There's, there's no coming and going constantly during the day.
And there would be no, other than the storage of the equipment and the removal and return each day, no other business would be happening on the property really at any time. It's really just to store equipment. Okay?
Right. And being able to leave my home to provide a service and then coming home and storing my equipment there.
Right. And, and okay, any, before I continue, any other questions from board members before we get to public comment?
No questions from me.
I will look forward to hearing about the driveway access options, but we can move forward for now.
Yeah. Well, why don't, that's what I wanted to ask about, Sarah. Is, you're showing sort of a drawing to indicate that there would be basically a second driveway?
Yes, there, there is a second driveway. It's a stone and gravel that leads up to the shed.
It's already there. It's existing.
Yes.
So I just want to comment that DPW also made a rough comment about that and there are comments that there has been no permit issued for a second driveway. I think I didn't have a chance to drive there myself, but certainly from Google Earth, it's not a formal driveway that's overgrown from, you know, just two years ago. So they strongly.
Could you repeat that, Carolyn? It's not a formal driveway?
Not that I'm aware of and DPW certainly isn't aware of. So it is an issue in terms of making sure that this is an accessory used to a single family home and not just a separate, considered a separate commercial use. And the two driveways require a site plan approval from the planning board. So none of that has been approved or permitted previously. So that is, you know, an issue I think the board needs to evaluate as part of this permit.
So can you just clarify what it means to be a formal driveway versus, I guess you might call this an informal driveway? Did you say that to have two driveways, for example, to official, I'll call them official driveways? They, you, the city has to approve the second driveway?
Correct. They have to approve any access onto a public way. And so there's no permit that DPW recognized it as a, as a second driveway that they had, didn't, at least in their comments, said that this would be a new driveway.
And is that what's referred to as a curb cut permit sometimes?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's issued by the planning board?
DPW.
DPW issues a curb cut permit?
Right.
And so it doesn't matter if the driveway has informally been used, no matter how long, by the property owner?
Correct. And particularly your, this is a new, this is a special permit asking for a new use and accessory to a residential use. So in that context, the board certainly has the ability to require that all the appropriate permits are granted or that no second driveway is created for the purposes of having an accessory home business.
Okay. And so that kind of begs, it, it sounds to me like that, what that analysis leads to is that either, this is just my take on it, we would, we, we could or should only approve the request if it's subject to the condition that, that storage structure would need to be accessed from the street by way of the existing driveway to the house. Where instead of the, the, the second informal driveway for which there's no curb cut permit.
Correct.
So I guess my question for the applicant is, is that feasible from your standpoint to?
Yes, absolutely. But the only reason I did the stone and gravel and, and is because there was a piece of blacktop that was probably eight feet wide that went in, in that, that area where I added to the driveway. It was, it was already blacktop there that went in probably eight feet from, from the road.
Right. But it sounds like it wouldn't be a huge problem if we felt constrained to say you need to access the.
From, from my existing.
From your existing official driveway, the one that goes to your house. Okay, that's very helpful because that frankly gets us off the hook because otherwise we have a problem based on what, what Carolyn is saying. Before we ask for public comment, any other questions from the board?
I wonder if we can look at a couple more on the screen share. A couple more of the images, the next one down. Thanks, Carolyn. And then I'm realizing that perhaps our condition would be about it being a permitted, it must be accessed from a permitted driveway. And then if he gets the other one permitted, you don't have to come back to us to say, yeah, you can use one you have a permit for.
Or maybe, I think my, my concern is maybe we could be more specific and say, you know, our, our approval is, is over the existing lawful driveway, I'll call it. But, I mean, it's a little hard to project into the future. I guess that's my, my concern, but.
That's why I was just going to leave it as, it must be accessed by a permitted driveway. But I'm seeing now with this next picture that's up on the screen share that it's not a big reach to get over there. It's not like he's got to cut through the woods to get there.
No, no, absolutely not. No.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I want to complicate things in my opinion. But I don't know, Carolyn, if you have any reaction to that because I don't want to create sort of uncertainty for, for your office.
Yeah. I mean, I, I guess I would argue, and I mentioned in my staff report that, you know, you have, you're reviewing an accessory use to the single family house. And accessory home businesses are really about being invisible. And to the extent that additional driveways are created with separate, you know, access going and coming, I think it takes away, it detracts from that concept of having an accessory to a single family home. And so I think that, so I think the board should think about a permit condition in that context as opposed to saying it's either or.
Yeah, that's how I feel. I think that, you know, if in the future the applicant wants to pursue the idea of the second driveway. wants to pursue the idea of the second driveway, for one thing, that would trigger planning board review, and that would be his prerogative at that point in time. Does that make sense? And versus us trying to sort of project into the future and grant rights based on circumstances that don't exist right now, namely a curb cut, because I think the planning board would have to get into that, well, I guess they would anyway, maybe, but does that make sense?
Sure.
So if there are no other board questions, we can always continue in a minute. Are there, I understand there may be members of the public who might want to comment or address the board?
Yeah. On this application. Council La Barge has her hand up.
Okay.
Thank you, Carolyn. City Councilor Marion La Barge, I've been on those premises, and I know the people, the girl who owned that house for 21 years. And I have to agree with what I'm hearing from Carolyn Mish, that I think we need to look at the assessing into that driveway to the left where the shed is, because I recall about pavement up there, I have a problem with that. I remember all this, but I don't remember the pavement, plus the fact that house was not lived into for quite a long time because the owner of that house lived with their mother off of Malville Road, because the mother was in her 90s. So there was probably a lot of overgrowth on that, because I'm hearing Miles say that there was some black tar on that bottom. I don't recall that. But I like the direction that Carolyn Mish is going into, and I think that would solve a lot of problems. But I just want to give a little history about Miles. You know, as you know, I am a city councilor, and I'm here this afternoon to talk about the special permit for a home business submitted by Miles Powers, living at 218 Drury Lane in Florence. I want to talk about Miles Powers submitting this special permit for a home business. Miles worked for his father for many years. His father Gary Powers resided on Florence Road, and as his city councilor told me, he would like to open up a home business of lawn care, mulch, leaf removal, sanding, and snow plowing. And that is what has happened here. I do have the son now, who wants to open up a home business of the landscaping and so forth. Gary's, Miles' father, him and I, and Gary's wife, Annie, went door to door and let the residents know exactly what Gary wanted to do with opening up his home business. We went to all the houses, and that's critical with me as a city councilor, of showing that visibility of that person applying for a permit of what we're going to do. And it makes life easier for zoning, it makes life easier for planning, and I found that out for 21 years. So anyways, we even hit on Perkspert Road, Platinum Circle and Diamond Court. We sent to the petition to the planning office, so week before the meeting, with the many residents who were in full support of Gary's father opening up the business. We had nobody disagreeing. Mr. Gary Powers passed away in 2018. The business was left to the responsibility of Gary's widow, Anna Powers, who owns that property on Florence Road, not Gary. Annie and I had a lengthy talk of how much time she had to spend reorganizing that business, which she really didn't have her hands into it, but she handled like the mailing and so forth like that. She was left with a lot of responsibility. So anyways, after about two years, she decided she no longer wanted to keep the business, and she decided to give that business to Miles Powers. She no longer wanted the business on her property, which she owned herself. Miles and I talked in regards of him opening up a business on 218 Drury Lane. I proceeded to let him know about what his father did with the petition and so forth, and what would be expected of him. I also told him he would need a special permit for a home business. I told Miles to get in touch with the building inspector, at that time, Louis Hasbrook, and then Jonathan Flag. That didn't occur until about two months later. Miles did fill out an application after the building inspectors talked with him about what he wanted to do during the application process. He also applied for a permit to build a garage building, which he did do, and it has been completed. And I went over by site, and I did look at that. I just want the zoning board to hear something that I feel is very valuable here, very valuable. It was bad enough in 2018 that Miles lost his dad. About two months later, he lost his wife Beth at a very young age to cancer. Miles was left with responsibility of bringing up his four little girls, making sure they have a good quality of life. The ages of his little girls are one daughter at seven years old, a set of twin daughters at five years old, and one daughter at three years old. Miles is very fortunate, believe me, to have a family that has been helping him to be able to continue, continue on to work and support his beautiful family. As a city councilor, I told Miles with the process of the application that hours of business was critical, even though it is a residential area way before Clear Falls, it used to be pretty noisy out there and that, but it's very, very quiet. And I know many residents on Malville Road right down the line. Anyways, I also told him about how much equipment would be placed on the premises, and if that equipment would be used on his site. Also, how many employees would he have, and how many at his location at any one time? Now, anyways, I just feel that a big concern that I have is the storage of flammable liquids, including gasoline, at that location, or any location that's filing for a special permit like his dad did, which he had to have a special area of the gasoline for his lawnmowers and everything. And the fire department came yearly to check out that premises. Anyways, Miles replied back to me that he does not use gasoline on his premises. He goes to a gas station early in the morning to fill up his lawn north. Will Miles be mulching? That is another concern. Will he be buying the mulch or creating the mulch? He will be doing leaf removal and grass removal. Will there be cutting of any bushes? Where would the grass, the leaves, and the bushes be disposed of? When you apply for a special permit for a home business, you need to follow the regulations, which prevents a city councilor getting complaints from the butters in the neighborhood. And I do know that. I've been working with the building inspector throughout the summer, up to the latter part of the fall this year, of someone attempting to run a home business with no special permit. That finally has come to an end, with the residents being extremely helpful taking pictures, the building inspector sending two letters of stop and desist. I am supporting Miles Powers of hoping that the zoning board will give him that opportunity to be able to get approval of a special permit of a home business. In hearing what Carolyn Mish has brought forth, I definitely would like that included on there, if this does go for approval. And I, knowing Miles, I have a lot of respect for him and his little children, that he will follow the regulations without affecting any of the neighbors, their butters, or the neighborhood. Sincerely, and I thank you.
Thank you, Councilor La Barge. That was very helpful, and to have that background is also really meaningful. So I think we're all on the same page in terms of, but why don't we, why don't we make a decision here? Are we ready? If there's no one else here who might want to speak other, other than board members, I guess we can move to close the public hearing, and then right after that, we'll vote on the application. Just motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, and roll call, please.
Sarah Northrup?
Yes.
Bob Riddle?
Yes.
And David Bloomberg?
Yes. So now, now I think we're ready for a motion on the application.
Why don't you make it, Sarah? You had some concerns.
All right. Let's see. I move that we approve a special permit for home-based business with one employee as presented under the condition that the business uses the existing permitted driveway so that it, the business is an accessory use to the residents. Any other, any other such concerns? I also concerned about management of hazardous liquids, and there's, I think there's plenty of laws and rules about that. So I won't condition it there myself.
Yeah, I, I think I agree with Councilor La Barge that, that the, that's governed by other rules and regulations that are ably enforced by the building inspector and other departments. So second on the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, and I, I guess we're ready for a roll call vote, please.
Uh, Bob Riddle?
Um, yes.
Sarah Northrup?
Yes.
And David Bloomberg?
Yes, absolutely. So it's unanimous. Congratulations, thank you.
Look, Mr. Powers.
I just want to say thank you. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Look forward to seeing your trucks out there. Walking the streets. More machine.
And thank you, thank you, Councilor La Barge, for the, the background that was so helpful and so much appreciated.
Thank you all.
Okay, I think we have one set of minutes we could vote on before we vote to adjourn.
Yes, from November 12?
Yes. If there are no problems with them, if there are no problems with anyone else, I'll just move to accept the minutes of November 12.
Second.
Okay, and a roll call vote, please.
Sarah Northrup?
Yes.
Bob Riddle?
Yes.
And David Bloomberg?
Just looking at the one last time. Uh, yes.
Okay.
Uh, so that's unanimous, thanks. And then, before we adjourn, or do we need to mark our calendars? Do we know anything about upcoming meetings yet?
Um, there is a special permit that will be scheduled for January 14. That's going to be the next hearing date. So I haven't finalized that yet, because, you know, we skip over the end of the year.
Right, so ZPA, I'm just, 14.
Yep.
And 5:30, okay. And then I guess if that's the only other business, we could have a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn?
Second.
Okay, and roll call?
Sarah Northrup?
Yes.
Bob Riddle?
Yes.
David Bloomberg?
Yes, that's unanimous, thank you.